I was telling Debbie, I might have told you. There's that.
Send no comments under your breath. That's right.
All right, we'll get started. Debbie, you want to call us to order?
Yes. Delay, Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
And Mr. Kembala.
Here. All right. So instructions for the public hearing. Oath will be taken by all attendees. Just all of you who wish to speak during this hearing. Since we have no attendees this evening, we'll skip that part if somebody comes in and they wish to speak, we can circle back. So Christine, you want to go ahead and hop in?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief overview. Feel free to jump in if you have any questions. It's got a few slides here. So this is a public hearing for the node overlay text amendment that would apply to four development nodes along State Route 125. They're highlighted with the red circles there. This is modeled after the downtown Amelia overlay, which the Amelia overlay is that hatched area doesn't have a circle around it. This node overlay text amendment would take similar, a similar type of overlay that we did for Amelia and apply it to the four other development nodes that were identified in the land use plan. I think you're probably pretty familiar with the process for a node for a text amendment. This went to zoning commission, Claremont County Planning Commission, Pierce Township, zoning commission, public hearing, that has already taken place. So now this is the public hearing with the board. And within 20 days after this public hearing, the board shall either adopt or deny the recommendations of zoning commission. So zoning commission has recommended approval of this, both Pierce Township and Claremont County. So I mentioned the areas that we're talking about. So this overlay would be additional regulations that would be in addition to the base zoning district. So they're more strict. There are several uses that are prohibited, especially vehicular oriented uses and kind of low, low economic development, like storage facilities, for example, are not allowed. We also zoning commission wanted to add massage parlors, smoke shops, pawn shops, and payday lenders and predatory lenders as prohibited uses. So these are mostly one through 12 are in downtown Amelia as prohibited, and then we added a few additional. So the purpose is to encourage high quality mixed use development consistent with the land use plan. As I mentioned, there are uses that are not allowed and those nodes that would not be allowed if this is approved. And then there's a focus on high quality architecture. So if a new site plan came through for a new building or substantial remodel to a building, it would need to go through zoning commission for an architectural review. So it would have a more stringent review process. So it would focus on architectural design, more pedestrian scale, high quality building material, materials, parking to be located in the side or rear, and enhanced landscaping and additional signage restrictions. So there would be no pole signs allowed and no electronic signs allowed. So you still, businesses could still do a monument sign and signs on the building. So it's, it's intended to be just a higher quality, more, more appealing design. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I won't go over the whole code, but the code is in your packet. If you do have any questions, those are kind of the highlights.
I want real quick question. So when you mentioned smoke shops, does that include vape shops?
Yes.
Okay. And what about tattoo parlors? I didn't see that on here.
We didn't have that on there, but that's something that could be added if you wanted to.
Suggestion, since we're looking to, not that there's anything wrong with tattoo parlors or tattoos, but it's just a thought from my perspective that might be something to consider.
Yeah, that would make sense. But we already have a node overlay there currently, right? Or some sort of, what do we call it? The Amelia district?
Yes.
So I just want to back up on that just real quick so I understand exactly what, what, what we're starting with and where we're going. So what's the current zoning right now? Just Amelia industrial or commercial type zoning?
So the, the shaded colors you see on the map, the red, for example, is general business. In Amelia, there are also some other zoning districts that are the base zoning district. But then Amelia has an overlay on top of that. That's very similar to this code that we're reviewing that applies in addition to the base zoning district. So so Amelia has the node over it right now, the overlay, the historic, historic Amelia overlay, and that code is very similar to this code. But it only applies to that one little area. So this code would apply to the four development nodes.
I understand. And does this get laid over top of the, what's already there and that what's there stays and this adds to it?
Yes.
And extends into other areas where it's not currently? Is that?
Yeah. So whatever is more strict would apply. So for example, if the base zoning district is general business, that pink and smoke and vape shops are allowed in general business district. But if the property has this overlay on top of it, then we would check both the codes and whichever is more strict would apply. So even though it'd be allowed in the base district, if it's got the overlay, the more strict thing would apply. So basically those uses would only be still allowed on 125 in the properties that don't fall within the nodes.
Is, uh, i- is there any way to, to sort of decrease the entropy here or like, you know, like make it more simple so that it's no, not so difficult, like to figure out instead of adding layers, is it, is it possible to, to just tie it all up into one overlay and pass that and get rid of the other stuff? Just over time, this isn't a real sustainable. But maybe it's not, maybe there's reasons why that's not feasible. I'm, I'm not suggesting we do that necessarily, I'm just asking.
Well, this comes from the land use plan and the land use plan identified those particular nodes and those particular properties. So it's just the way the land use plan, and Eddie, feel free to jump in since you were involved with that.
I don't know is always an okay answer.
So what is, this sounds really important, but like both of us we found is evolving and breathing approach. And one of the thoughts for why the zones were the kind of the policy research that the land can be recommended, just because each one over time will start to make this more, more unique character, like Amelia has its own field, Hamilton has its own, its own kind of approach field, same thing with Berwind. And so each one, back over time, will have, there's probably changes and quirks and things over time that are making one start to get a bunch of bad land uses, for instance. And so over time, each one might evolve into a more unique sort of neighborhood center sort of thing. So that was kind of like, you're right, you're, you're referencing another brand of approach, but it is kind of like, the overlay is generally used in lieu of creating more zoning districts, like creating like Merwind only districts, then a Hamilton only district, Amelia only districts. And I know that sounds super counterintuitive because it seems to sound like right now, well, all of a sudden, but the end goal is in that way when you're, when you're anything that.
Yeah, I understand. So I mean, the complexity sort of does add a, add a rich, a nuance richness of, of, you know, more, you know, flexibility within specific areas all along that corridor, whereas maybe you wouldn't have that as much. Okay, I got it.
Maybe, maybe it would be helpful, well, it would be helpful to me if we kind of looked at it from a scenario perspective. So like, for instance, someone wants to develop in this business district. And you've got these two, not competing necessarily, but two parallel basic zoning codes. And let's say, for instance, in this one right here that we're looking at, it says, and and maybe this is discussed and I just missed it because that's always a possibility. But it says in here that bars and I know it's going to sound weird, I'm going to focus in on bars. And nightclubs. What about a brewery? Okay.
Yeah, that would fall under another.
See, that's kind of the scenario thing I'd like to drill down on. So, so I walk in and I want to have a, have a brewery. What is the distinction between a, a bar and nightclub and a brewery? According to the, the part, the parallel process.
One, one thing that is under the, that I think this whole layer, like this don't have any, for instance, and and also over members, they have bars associated with their news. And I think it was like, it had the, the fact they have a restaurant as well, they have a robbery, they didn't even solve it fine.
There was the answer I was looking for.
It's fairly clear is that these, these will go to the zoning commission, so it won't just go to staff. And then one of the major benefits of that is that the zoning commission can issue waivers and, and more in their flexibility that staff doesn't have to deal with to do.
Right.
So there are, if there are certain requirements or something, frequently there's going to be a mission to look around more case by case based on staff.
Yeah, because as you know very well, both of you, economic development, you have to be somewhat flexible. Because you're not going to get the opportunities, not going to necessarily be, you know, cut and dried, you're going to have to really focus on it. So flexibility is going to be important. And getting some, you know, developer caught between these two wickets is, 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 I think Nick pointed that out quite rightly. You do have this long-term fear that it's going to be easier for me to develop on the other side of the street than on this side of the street. And so you're pushing development someplace else, not sticking inside of Pierce. So that's the only thing long-term, perhaps we can start thinking about if we pass this, that we would think about at a certain point alleviating ourselves of the second piece. So that, that way we're focused on just one zoning code. Developers can come in and deal with one zoning code, not if then I jump to and then, because eventually they'll just say, this is costing me too much time and energy. I'll go across the street if I want to be in this neighborhood.
Just a thought. That's where I got, that's where I got, that my thought process started was similar like a tax code or something where over time it just gets more and more and more complex. And then you have to hire the tax expert to figure it out when really the, the crux of it is they want some of your money.
Yeah.
Every year, you know, but it's so complicated.
Right.
So.
Because a lot of times if you're not going to walk those developers through a lot of this stuff, when they look at our zoning code and they see this box of mess, you know, would you, would you bring your company there?
Yeah. So you're creating a barrier, a bit of a barrier to entry there.
Yeah, that's, that's just the long-term. I mean, I, I do like what's inside of this document and how this works. But over time, we may want to just think about that other overlay eventually evaporating and going away over, over a period of time. Because then I don't know if it'll be necessary. I mean, you know, we're talking about tattoo parlors and that sort of thing. I want to make it clear that none of those go away, right? So if you're a tattoo parlor, you're not, you don't have to run in here and sue us next week, right? Because we want to run you out. Truth is, we're just not going to add 30 of them along that corridor. We're going to have just one or two. So.
The same thing with signs and stuff, right? I mean, you have a sign now or whatever, you don't have to tear it down. But if you're going to build a new place and put a new sign up, it's got to look a certain way or whatever. Is there a way, is there a reason to start not to, is there, do you guys have a strong reason not to add tattoo parlors to this list? Or was that simply perhaps in a, in a sense overlooked or did, did you consider it and not do it?
I think the more we've talked about it, the more that gets added to the list, just in brainstorming.
Yeah.
Thinking of other things that we don't want to see.
Sure.
So.
I just think, I just think at a certain point, a comprehensive list of things we don't want to proliferate, not so much that we don't want to see, but we don't want to see it prolific, proliferate. That, I think that's what, that's what I would want to see because this, you know, again, I don't want to see a whole, you know, I don't want to see a whole string of, of used car lots, tattoo parlors. And what is it, what is it in, in Anderson Township? I want to pick on Anderson now. Anderson has chicken and tires. Is that right? So we don't want to be known as the tattoo used car lot, you know, massage parlor corridor in Ohio. But so maybe we want to put tattoos on there.
I would suggest that.
Yeah, I think so. Well, should we make that?
We don't, we're not saying that. And I would probably never do that. As you well know, we've had this conversation. If I ever had a tattoo, it'd be a dot. Because they'd put the needle on my body and I would scream so loud and run out of there. That'd be the last thing they'd ever do. But it's not the, it's not the issue of the, of the, of the shop. It's, you say, I don't want to have 20 of them in, in a whole, in whole string. I'd like to have a nice sit-down restaurant and, you know.
I do like the question though, Debbie. That's an interesting direction to go with the meeting is start to dive into.
Now.
Kind of tattoos we may have under.
It is kind of funny though, because I was the only one that answered. Now, having said that, gentlemen.
Getting in the number of truth and I don't have any, same thing with, 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 I think it's a good point as far as, you know, bars and things like that. I mean, you know, I may like to have a drink, but I don't want the corridor just cluttered with none, with all bars. So.
Right.
A limitation.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just that issue of proliferation. You just don't want a lot.
Should.
He is not letting it go, man.
Should we consider a?
He does.
Should, should we consider a more?
He did under his breath though. I think that means he's thinking about.
I'm considering. I don't want to close then, I might not have options. Should we make a more comprehensive list? Should we put more thought into the list or do you think we should pass? With a modification? Or can we even pass with a modification?
Well, the list that, that I saw, it, it comports pretty nicely with what our land use plan pointed out and what I've heard from the community over the years of the things they don't want to see in that corridor. So it's, it is pretty, pretty thorough. It, it did, it did jump out at me, the tattoo parlors.
I thought that was mentioned as something back when we were doing the land use plan, that people did not want.
I think so.
And that's ultimately what my kind of, again, I don't have anything personally against, for or against, but that was something I recall was discussed.
Exactly. And, and so it jumped out at you, it kind of jumped out at me too. And I think the next logical thought would be perhaps we missed something else.
Sure.
But I mean, maybe not. I don't know, but.
Well, my only thing is I don't know, because there's been a lot of work done, a lot of work, work put into this. And we're now at the, kind of the 11th hour of this process. Am I, am I correct?
Yeah, but there's, there's no urgency. If you feel we need more time to think about it, you know, you could not approve this and we could look at it next year, something like that, if you prefer. It's up to you. There's no rush, but it's already gone through zoning commission and.
Would it send it back to that if we put this back into next year? How long before the work here has to go back through those processes?
So if it gets denied, then the process would start back over. I'm thinking for future years, I'd like to try to consolidate all of our text amendments into one. Just do one time per year. That way we don't have to schedule multiple public hearings. That was just what I was thinking.
Yeah.
But if you have a certain timeframe that you'd like to see, we can, we could do it faster or we could just roll it in with everything we do next year and do it everything at once, whatever you prefer. But it would need to start the process over again.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I want it to start over again. I'd rather just be able to amend it as needed. And then we can add things to it. And I think we just added tattoo parlors.
Right. And if next year we come up with a few more things, we could always amend that.
But, but I'm also looking at number 11. I know you wanted to move on, but under number 11 industrial uses, that seems pretty wide open.
Well, in the, I'm looking at the non-residential use table when you asked about bars. I'm seeing there's a separate line item for restaurants. There's a separate line, line item for brew pubs. There is a section for light industrial uses that are only permitted in industrial. Heavy industrial only permitted industrial. I actually can't think of what industrial uses would be.
Well, this is maybe a little more kind of, I'm going to be the overall scenario is the industrial several properties on the 132 aren't included, uh, the amount of property, uh, touching 125, but it's also not included. So it's all the properties are mostly just like predominantly the brand commercial products that mostly like retail in nature, other ones that are included, especially.
So the other day I talked to a company that they are trying to manufacture oddly enough, credit cards. And they don't need a tremendous amount of square footage. They, they, you know, they can operate on, you know, five, 10,000 square foot, whatever. Would that be something that in the right location, like I'm trying to think of a, a particular spot on the 125 corridor building? Let's say, let's just say for argument's sake, the, where the vet is. In that, in that area, as I recall, there's an open lot right there where there's the, the vet and then there's the, the storage units right across from Goodwill. In that scenario, could they build in that corridor, even though it would be considered an industrial use? Or let's go back to the brewery. Let's pretend the brewery wants to can their product or bottle their product. Would that be considered industrial manufacturing?
As far as the industrial, the reason you're referencing, I have the other scenario, I don't know that it would be permitted right now in the, in the commercial districts. It would probably be like a light industrial. And that was one thing we talked about, about how we attack that as far as creating flexibility, but not not, you know, tailoring it so that I can say light industrial, but it doesn't just, you don't turn a, a retailer into an industrial.
Right. Well, let me give you another scenario. One that actually I think is, is, is somewhat on its way is the, the maker's market. The idea that you could have, for instance, the, and of course, this is the Victorian, but jump across the street in the old police station. What happens if, if someone like the folks that own the Victorian now decided that, you know, we're going to put a coffee shop and, you know, uh, something over at the Victorian, but you can manufacture it across the street at the, at the, and it's, I mean, it's an agricultural use potentially. It's, you know, making cookies or, you know, grinding coffee or, or whatever else. But a lot of communities are now moving toward these kind of makers market downtown cute, you know, folksy kind of field. What would we do with that? I, I know, I'm actually being a pain in the ass, but.
So, so if you just, I don't, I'll let you answer real quick in a second, but if you, if you had a big, a tight enough net to catch that, there could always be an exception given.
Of course.
So if you don't have the net to catch it, then you could have like a big smoke stack and like, you know.
Well, and I understand that. I, I get that, but I'm talking about really light industrial in this, this line item just simply says industrial.
All right, I got you.
So I'm just trying to say, if there, what, what, maybe we need to have tighter definition around what wouldn't be, you know? Does that make sense?
Well, that might be with the next round of text amendments, as Christine suggested. In the meantime, rather than throwing it back to start the whole process over again. You know, that would be my suggestion where to perhaps narrow that down a little bit. But I think if you look back at the intent of the public, the public's input, the intent is to create, if you will, I don't want to say an entertainment, entertainment districts, but you know, a feeling or a gist of something that's more for the public, not necessarily for industrial uses, light or otherwise. They, they want something specific for these areas, rightfully so, you know, to satisfy their entertainment, if you will, needs. You know, dining and music, whatever. But I'm hearing from what I heard from the public input we got was that that's kind of what they want, rather than industrial, anything really, in these particular locations.
What I'm kind of driving at is that two of the three examples that I just gave would be considered, I think, an industrial use.
Yeah.
And that's where you narrow it down.
Yeah, I think generally it might be better to create, to use a tighter net, catch it and, and, and let it through than it is to, 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 once it goes through, try and pull it back in.
But I don't want to be in a position where it, it, it appears from the surface, like again, back to what you had said, that if I'm a developer, if I'm an investor, that it already looks too tight and too difficult. And I'm just like, I'm just not going to do it. Because I've already bought the, I've already bought the Victorian. I can keep all that investment on the other side of the street.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So root pubs are permitted in pretty much all parts of the district. And I think this is probably, so some of these network, I know that our news table, obviously, it's only as good as the point in time is created, right? So there's a interpretation that wasn't heard. Where someone might come through and they'll say, well, I, I sell coffee, but I also have books that you can buy. And it's like, okay, well, are you a book shop or are you a coffee shop? And the limit staff has made out of interpretation is to try and put as much common sense into it as possible. And I'll say, look, you know, like, it's kind of like, don't do any harm first. You're a coffee shop and you sell books, big deal. You slide in as a coffee shop inside a weekly. The same approach is being taken with, with coffee shops that roast or have a bakery component as well. We don't take, we don't, we don't back into it and say, well, you guys, uh, baking equipment, so you're a bakery first, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, but most of our, we're trying to take a reasonable approach to sliding into different categories. Uh, but again, it, it would likely be impossible to create a new staple that has.
Oh, of course. Yeah. And I totally understand that. But like I said, what, what I'm, again, it's that parallel path. If we've got two zoning codes and I'm, I'm a developer, I'm like, I don't feel like dealing with this. I'll just, I'll just go across the street where it's simple. Or I'll go to UT where it's simple.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to hope they have a favorable view of this and let me slide through. I'm going to go somewhere where I know I can do it for sure.
Right. That's all, that's all I'm trying to say. And then as, as, as a staff, I mean, it's going to then be upon you to find how that path gets done. Creatively or otherwise. I wasn't trying to make it difficult. I'm just simply saying, you know, when you start to run some of the traps, you start to get a little bit more nervous about how things work in the real world.
Yeah, unfortunately, we did think a little more critically as a board. More fortunately, depending on your perspective.
Because this meeting would be over half an hour ago.
Guys would have gotten approved. Yeah, sorry.
We would have added tattoos and been like, done.
Tattoo is a good catch.
Yeah, it was.
We, I, in order to keep things moving, we. We, I, in order to keep things moving, we could, we could approve with the amendment of the tattoo parlor for this evening, correct? And then uh keep even look into some of these ideas and come back again next year or even sooner if we wanted to and revisit an amendment or a change to this, right?
Mm hmm. Would you? Just, again, scenarios again. How about we make it a regular date? You know, we say, we, we're going to schedule on our calendar, we're going to come back and revisit this on a regular basis. And the zoning commission, our zoning folks, need to have a report, see where it's working and where it's, you know, where where there's been friction and where you guys want to change it, consistent with what you wanted to do one time a year and that you just have a regular date to come before this board.
For this particular thing or for?
For this, for this or anything she's.
Visualizing that to be just a report or a grouping of proposed amendments?
It could be either one. I mean, if you have nothing, then we just, you know, give, give a report and the meeting's over in a half an hour unless I come up with a bunch of dumb questions. But otherwise, I mean, it could be you come forward with six or eight things that you found didn't work. And because it might, that might happen in the first couple of years where we're, you know, because as as I think Eddie said, it's a living, breathing document. But if I keep talking about it, it's going to suffocate it.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we just set a date a year, we can approve now, set a date a year from now and just do it.
Yeah.
For sure. Does that sound good?
Yeah, or it could even be, maybe the fall would be better.
Yeah, whatever's best for you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that sounds perfect. That's in line with kind of what I was visualizing.
Okay.
Well, because we have the BCA, we're getting a BCA report together to go to the zoning commission to talk about the kinds of issues they've seen. So then zoning commission can start thinking about it, take a few months and then come up with changes and.
That sounds great.
And or report.
We'll leave the date up to you sometime in the fall, October, November, and you can figure that part out. Tonight, uh we will need a a a motion to a to approve uh the zoning resolution uh establishing the, what are we calling it?
We need to open and close public comment.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Oh, sure.
There's no one here, so.
Okay, so uh we will open the floor to public comment. Eddie, would you please get out of the public? So if there is anyone here, they could speak and they'd have to do the oath, but we don't have anybody to to speak. So I will open it for for public comment for the sake of uh procedure.
And I guess vote, you you need to have a motion and a vote.
So I have a, do I have a motion to to close, or what do they call it, deliberation or?
Let's do the, let's do the uh open.
Public comment.
Motion to open to public comment. I so move.
A second.
Motion in a second, discussion about discussion. I'm hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
And I move to close the public comment.
Second.
It's been so contentious, let's close it.
Motion in a second, discussion.
Yes.
We didn't give it, it might be somebody out there. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
And Mr. Caddick.
Yes. Closed public comment.
Yep, there we go, now we get to motion to recommend.
Okay, so Christine, you want to tell us what this should sound like?
So it sounds like you're had, you want to make a motion to recommend approval with the modification that tattoo parlors are added as a prohibited use?
I make the motion.
Got a second? Motion in a second, discussion. Roll call.
Uh, Michelle.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Caddick.
Yes. And now we need a motion to adjourn the meeting, correct?
Motion, seconded.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mr. Gil.
Yes.
Mr. Caddick.
Yes. All right.
All right.
Good deal. Yeah. No tattoo parlors.